Michelle. She just walked in.
Part of the board is in.
Yeah, but that's right. Alright, there you go. I call this meeting to order. Mr. Mayor, please call roll.
Mr. Rivers?
Here.
Mr. Grumbles?
Present.
Ms. Taranto?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. This special meeting was called today for a couple items of business the board would like to get taken care of. The first is in regards to the acting township administrator and some of the duties that need to be taken care of. I know our new trustee, trustee Grumbles, has met with the staff and kind of taken, I think, the lead on some of these. So I'll turn it over to him and kind of let him go with it.
Sure. So I'm not with the team and we talked about open actions and roles and responsibility. And right now, the team was comfortable with having kind of a sounding board or a point person, which I offered to do in lieu of a formal administrator. And they provided me with a list of different items that are open and that require specific attention from the former administrator or acting administrator. And the discussion lent itself to really not needing a point person in an interim. Obviously, it would depend on how long a search takes, but extends a few months or so, then, you know, we may want to sit back and reconsider. But right now, they were all doing well with their reporting and maintaining their own departments. So it was really more of a sounding board and bringing concerns that bubble up to the surface to the board, which again, I'm happy to assist with. Talked about copying all the board, et cetera, making sure that everybody's aware. But ultimately, agreed with them that that would be something feasible. And that's it. I'm happy to put these in a more formal chart, send them off to you all, just notes from our conversation.
And also, the feedback that I got was, you know, as far as the active duties and roles and what we need to step forward and take care of to make sure as far as our current team, with what they have on their plate, that everything's properly backfilled and no one gets overwhelmed, obviously. So I guess I think we need to kind of figure out, just going forward, to make sure that there's no gaps, who's handling what duties and that everyone's comfortable kind of with traffic and all this going forward.
So what I'm hearing is you don't want to have an interim administrator?
I think as far as, if I'm hearing this right, as far as the duties of the different departments and the workload that we each kind of supplement in those areas.
Right. The two areas that were discussed specifically were a sounding board and traffic control, meaning that the stuff kind of comes in, ensuring that it's routed to the right person, et cetera. So I didn't think that either of those warranted moving someone into an administrator role temporarily that we as a board could absorb those. Whether you want to go back to the liaison breakdown or if you just want me to take that workload on, I'm happy to do it too. But that was the ultimate decision that was discussed.
And like for zoning, obviously, I'm a zoning liaison, so I'm happy to assist and take care of all the needs in that area. I think we already have kind of a loose structure in place as far as the different areas that were looked at for assistance and support. And I think also with a new trustee who's eager to learn, it's a good opportunity for trustee Grumbles as well.
I don't feel comfortable putting the staff on the spot, really. I think we'll manage, right? We'll make it work. I'll see what I, I'll do whatever I can now. I know that you, it became a full-time job for you when you were the interim. There is a lot happening. So we will do our best. We'll muddle through. We'll do it together.
Yes, sir.
Seeing that it sounds like that's the route, although I would think each department leader, given that we have a liaison, could just report to that liaison if we had an issue or a problem or needs on it. Of course, I think we're all pretty good enough. Sending things to the board is a complete package of the information that has to share. The only question that I would have is, is given the administrators' emails and phone messages, if somebody in-house, probably someone here, would have access to those to be that control master, I guess, you know, sending those messages and forwarding emails off to the appropriate party, whether that be a trustee or a department. Probably is not a bad idea. How many have piled up, if they've been monitored or not as of today, but I would see that being a potential.
Sure.
It sounds like maybe something we should have forwarded to trustee Grumbles. Sounds like he wanted to kind of take charge there and then he can decide where they should go and who should address them.
We actually have a resolution here prepared for that issue.
Is that the first resolution?
Yes, it is. Chief, if, and Bill and Amanda were, since you all were present too, I mean, if I missed anything in summary from the meeting, feel free to speak to it now and then if not, we can always reconvene. And we talked about having follow-up meetings, weekly meetings and things of that nature where, you know, you have concerns or things pop up. So happy to continue to coordinate. And then one thing I did want to bring up too with the administrator function and kind of, if we're going to go to the liaison role, kind of take that approach, was back at the first meeting where HR and communications lies because we didn't assign. That's why I brought that up in the first meeting was that they really didn't have a liaison assigned to them. And that was, so that may create issue there. So I would just say for now, I would copy the board on any HR issues that are pertinent. Would be my recommendation. And then I know that in the absence of the administrator too, some of the issues with the new liaison roles, one that came up specifically was related to parks and roads. And that Debbie, I believe you stepped up to assist the Parks and Roads group because their liaison wasn't fulfilling that capacity last year. And so there's some work in process still. So with an administrator not there to kind of see that through. And with that being, where I'm a liaison, I did want to surface that as they report up through because the issues would overlap between the two of us since you had assisted last year with that. So if okay with you, I would ask that I could take charge of the two areas that I'm responsible as liaison and moving forward and be the point of contact. If that's alright.
The role of liaison, obviously, is to help them have one point of contact, but yet everything still goes to the entire board.
You were the single point of contact. That's why I'm bringing that up. That was communicated to you.
But I don't want to stop working on projects that I'm already involved in.
Sure.
Which all of us should be involved in various projects and then we bring them to the board. So I don't, I still will be working with Bill. I still will be talking to him about roads and parks. And even though I'm not the liaison, it's still my role as a trustee.
Primary point, things of that nature that I'm referring to. I wouldn't expect you to not be a part of the township and the duties and events and things of that nature that are happening, specifically talking about the liaison function.
Probably one of the biggest things that an administrator does is he is the point of contact for all three trustees. So he communicates to each of us individually. We cannot communicate together when we're not in a public meeting.
Understand that too.
So that's a concern I have.
And we can assess this, obviously, as we move forward and with this process, is when will we find our next administrator in a reasonable amount of time?
Now, I know that Prosecutor Betts had sent a resolution to all of us for hiring an interim. But I don't remember seeing a resolution. Did you just talk that there was a resolution about?
The resolution included, to discover, I think, what we had discussed.
Right. This was not what Chris Betts sent to me, though, correct?
Correct. I spoke to Chris Betts. I tried to get ahold of him last week and spoke to him briefly last week. And spoke to him again this morning and talked through the situation and kind of the findings after I met with the team. And modified what he had said. Your concern was around, I think, the salary, if I'm not mistaken.
Absolutely.
So since that's a non-issue, I didn't think it was pertinent. With this being a special meeting, I think the timing a little tight, but nothing. The resolutions here were pulled off of prior board meetings, modified for the purposes here. And that's it.
So within this resolution, there is an appointment. So it would be the board hereby appoints trustee Ben Grumbles to perform all duties or present Orange Township with respect to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement Delaware County Automatic Data Processing Board, Delaware County Board of Commissioners.
That's the part where I'd mentioned getting the emails and
Traffic Control.
Traffic Control. Somebody has to be appointed to do that.
Correct. And is this something that's just being decided today, discussed today, or has this been discussed previously?
Not being discussed previously. There's a blank in the resolution. You said that it sounds like something I should do, so I'm happy to do it.
And you'll have them forward the administrator's emails to you?
Yeah, or whoever. I'll see what the options are and I can communicate that back and we can talk about it at the next regular board meeting where we're able to.
Well, they're probably building up. I suggest you probably do it now.
I will. What I'm saying is that if there's additional options and they lay out kind of what we can do collectively, then I'll bring that to the board at the regular meeting where there's open discussion allowed. And we can figure out if we want to modify that once the full capabilities and options are put together. The other thing is, you know, with respect to policies and procedures and copies, most of what the team and the staff have are on PDF. And so we'll need to obtain electronic files and things like that that have all of our policies and procedures. I'd like to get that done from an administrator's standpoint and make sure that those are centralized so that as we work towards bringing in a new administrator in the event the board or anyone else needs him, including the team that couldn't find him, they have access to those.
I do certainly appreciate you, the gung-ho attitude, wanting to take things on and learn as much as you can. I am concerned, though, that you're going to be overwhelmed. I do think the administrator has a very important role and does a lot. That's probably my biggest concern. And the staff taking on more, they're all ready, just so busy. So those are just my thoughts on it.
Sure. And that's the purpose of the meeting we had, was to really understand if it was taking on more. Where the, you know, I'd specifically asked multiple times, what, if we started tomorrow, what would you need and that kind of thing? Or where are the workloads? What, you know, what workloads, that kind of thing? And that's where we landed. If I'm not being transparent there, you know, feel free to speak up again and add to that and take away.
I just had, you were going to email out the rest of the board policy as we talked about?
Yep, and I haven't done that yet.
And then you were going to ask us then to provide us with what we need. And as far as the policy, we have a network and everything is electronic on our network. So everything is available to all employees, all staff, even local officials. So the reference of, you know, paper is not?
It's a read-write copy, not just a read. So the team was looking for the write copy where they could write over and make changes to policy, modify that. They were unable to find one in particular.
Well, nobody brought them to our attention, so if they don't bring our attention, then we can do the changes that.
Which policy are we talking about?
One was the public records policy.
Oh, this one here?
Yep, that's the PDF version. So in order to modify that, we were working to get the word copy.
I can speak on the prior department behalf. When I release a policy or a standard operating guideline or something, I don't release a reliable to
Understand.
I keep that secure. Maybe a PDF. I would imagine that's the same.
Same thing that's put out on the network or the same thing that's put out online. You don't have multiple versions of a photo here. I'm going to have one master copy and, you know, somebody brought that to our attention to assist it. But I think this is a work to be done on itself.
Yep. The policy says the administrator would retain the copy. So my speculation is that it's with the administrator. So I imagine that's why the Word document wasn't able to be tracked down. And I wouldn't expect everyone to have a write copy. But again, that's why I want to get the Intergovernmental Agreement done.
But Intergovernmental is neutral.
Between the Delaware County IT Department handles all of our IT contracts.
Right. So we've had employees in the past, probably, who have called up and say, we wasn't aware of your stuff, their network access. We'll put something online, then there's an automatic, you know, response and then you don't get forward. It's never been such a normalized production in the past, so I'm not sure if this is the goal of the administrator, but this hasn't been a past practice and we not have the interaction with the government.
The agreement's already in existence, Amanda. It's already with
I'm just saying that's not something that we, this is not how we've handled it in the past.
It specifically names the administrator as the point of contact. So when we spoke with the auditor, when I spoke with the auditor and I spoke with the county IT leader to inquire as to what the next steps were, they did not want to talk to me about anything until there was a modification or a resolution passed by the collective board. They don't want an individual person to come in, request things and do anything like that unless the board proves now in the past the agreement specifically outlined the administrator as that person. And so in order to have someone that can move forward and do that without repercussions, we need to identify who that person is. So that's why it's on the agenda.
So the board hereby appoints trustee Grumbles to perform all duties and represent Orange Township with respect to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement. So I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 20-052 Township Representative or Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement.
Second.
Mr. Rivers?
Yes.
Mr. Grumbles?
Yes.
Ms. Taranto?
Hold on just a second. Yes.
The next item is just getting the posting up for the position. So we do have a resolution in here. I believe the language is all same as the prior posting. There are no changes. Any questions?
If you're not changing anything, we're losing hope to have another resolution. When we talk about changing position, I mean, that's a new assumption. This was in regards to the position description, but I've not received anything to change it in the board.
Sure. I think we just want to make sure it's there in black and white and
Right, but we have a resolution, I'll write that statement back.
Formal action to post it with the current board? The board, the current board making a formal action to authorize the posting of the job and the re-acceptance of the position description for the current hiring effort?
Is that something you're going to move forward then with the position? Do we have to change to do a formal resolution again?
To re-accept the position, to re-acknowledge the position description?
Yeah, so like in another resolution board, trust again, in order to pass a formal email, that's the change.
Prosecutor advised that any formal action needs to be passed via a resolution. And so by the board. And so a formal action in discussion would include a hiring effort, anything that would create a potential expense, things of that nature. So I think it would probably be best practice if we're going to do that to have a resolution drafted of some shape or form that outlines that we're acknowledging the position description associated with the hiring effort as a formal action. That way, as the person's hired and employment goes on, it's tied back to that resolution. No?
So I think really what she's saying is we already have a resolution in place accepting this job description, position description. So you don't need to do it again because the resolution already stands. And then your question is, if we're going to do this with other jobs, is this something that you should have prepared for the board to do each time a job needs filled? So this already stands. It's not going out, hiring a new administrator, just accepting the job, the description of the position. Do you understand?
Right. Well, it sounds like the advice given was that to pass a resolution.
Yeah. And allow the human resources manager to advertise the position as open and available.
Okay, does that state that in here that we're going to go out? Number six, the human resource manager hereby is authorized to advertise this position as open and available.
Again, that's the formal action that would warrant us acknowledging the position description associated with the formal action. So that's why we're putting everything together as one.
We can pass this today and if we have questions, if somebody needs to be reassessed for a procedure standpoint, I'm sure we can get some clarification there. I make the motion to approve Resolution 20-053 accepting the position description for the employment position of township administrator.
Second.
Mr. Rivers?
Yes.
Mr. Grumbles?
Yes.
Ms. Taranto?
Yes.
It takes us to our next item, which is the records respondent. The board, how do we wish to handle?
Right. So that's one where, because the policy was apparently retained on the administrator's, in the administrator's drive, we'll have to get the policy updated. In the absence of that, we can pass a motion, which would be tied to a resolution number, I guess, that would approve a temporary records respondent. And then we'll have to discuss in the next regular meeting what we want to do long-term with that as far as retaining it with the administrator's office, revert back to fiscal office because looking through past resolutions, that was something that was moved for a specific reason. So if you want to move back to precedent or if you want to keep it where it is, acknowledging too that we do have transition happening in the fiscal office in just a couple of months. So we have some moving parts here to consider as a board. And wanted to bring that up before we move forward here. But regarding the current state from a records respondent's standpoint, I'm of the mindset that we need to move forward reverting back to the fiscal office in the interim until we hire a new administrator.
Can I say something, Mr. Chairman?
Sure. I think that in a large township like this, having a township administrator as a respondent makes a lot of sense. I don't have any problem with that at all. And however, on a temporary basis, I'm happy to fill in. But I would suggest that down the road, the board consider, once a new administrator is onboard, board consider moving it back for the respondent to be the township administrator.
So that would be consistent with my comment?
Yes.
Where we're looking at a temporary records respondent until a new administrator is hired. Which we can do via motion now, if you're in agreement with that, Dr. Duranow. Be happy to do that.
We want to have a resolution with that, just a motion.
It's Q 054. 054 would be the resolution number. I mean, I'm sorry, 20-05.
I make the motion to approve Resolution 20-054 appointing the fiscal officer as the records respondent.
Second.
Mr. Rivers?
Yes.
Mr. Grumbles?
Yes.
Ms. Taranto?
Yes.
Alright. The next item is just, Michelle had asked to get a posting up for our Board of Zoning Appeals, to get some resumes in. Just need a consensus to move forward with that. She has the approval. That we approve to get the posting up.
Yes.
Okay with that? There you go. And the last item, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cowan regarding the county engineers' road improvement program.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan, appreciate it. Thanks for letting us put this on the agenda today. Part of the documents were provided by the latter of October 4th of 2019, asking that the estimate be accepted by the board trustee and signed when returned to the county. I mean, it's too good for that. Now, what we had before here were just the streets that we submitted earlier in the year to the county engineer's office. They take our list of streets and divide increments and the type of description of work for the street. Streets, real quick, Amherst Place, Last Star Boulevard, West Wilk Drive, Three Minutes Road, Short Street, Jay Cox Road, New Boys Road, Orange Point Drive, Rapids Way, North Central Avenue, Elsa Court, Deltona Road, and Fuzzland. The estimate is $834,130. Last year, he spent over a million dollars on road improvements. In addition to this estimate, we're also having to replace curb ramps where they aren't and code ADA compliance is necessary. So that'll be an additional cost, but for today, if you could consider and approve the estimate, we can get it signed and get it out of the county. I have the original here too for signing, by the way, if you do approve that. Thank you.
You have any issues with that?
You know, I will say that that was one of the things that Bill and I spoke about, was how they come up with the list and it's quite interesting. So if you've gone through that, I would recommend it. It's kind of a neat process of rating and coming up with the list. So, you know, it's a lot of work. So thanks, Bill, for doing that and thank the team too.
Our superintendent has a lot to do with this as well, Mr. James. He does the road rating for us every year, so that's a big, big, big guy.
Literally drives them all and scores them and it's a pretty interesting process.
Thank you. I make the motion to approve Resolution 20-055 to approve the Delaware County Engineers 2020 Road Improvement Program work estimate for Orange Township.
Second.
Do you want to brief the rest of it?
And author our signature of the same?
Right.
Second. Second.
Mr. Rivers?
Yes.
Mr. Rantow?
Yes.
Mr. Grumbles?
Yes. And that covers all of our business for today. I make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Mr. Rivers?
Yes.
Mr. Rantow?
Yes.
Mr. Grumbles?
Yes.